One.
Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Patch and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the Orvis T Minor Administrative Offices at each elementary, middle and secondary school in district. Roakhold.
Mrs. Caminini?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mrs. Minnies?
Here.
Mrs. Skelaski?
Here.
Mr. Soparowski?
Here.
Mr. Tull?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Mr. Capone?
Here. I now need a motion for HIV personnel matters and settlement agreements.
So moved.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions. See you in a little bit.
One.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, my name is Paige Payton and I'm a junior at Middletown High School North. Praises and prayers were submitted for Leah Holt, ninth grade, Dino Colberg, tenth grade, Isaac Corcan, eleventh grade, Brendan Costello, eleventh grade, Chase Valentine, eleventh grade, Shane Moore, eleventh grade, Thomas Lawrence, eleventh grade, Kate Bedata, eleventh grade, Janelle Sampson, twelfth grade, and Ethan Kinch, twelfth grade. The North Theatre Program received six Basie Award nominations including Riley Higgins for Best Supporting Actress in Little Women, Molly Lauren for Best Leading Actress in Little Women, Best Forest in a Musical for Pippen, Molly Lauren for Best Supporting Actress in Pippen, and Colin Caruso for Best Leading Actor in Pippen. Come cheer on our North Performing Arts Program at the Basies Awards on Wednesday, May 21st at the Count Basie Theatre in Red Bank. Deco Competitors Santiago Bermejo placed in the top ten in Finance at the International Competition in Orlando, Florida, with over 250 students competing from the United States, Canada, China, and several other countries. This proved to be a fantastic achievement. Santiago was an excellent ambassador for Middletown in New Jersey overall this year. On May first, North celebrated Decision Day for the class of 2025. Seniors were encouraged to wear the post-secondary, college, university, trade school, military, or workwear attire and took photos in the courtyard. Italian Honor Society members had their kicking court celebration on May first. Middletown High School North and our music programs hosted the Music in the Parks Festival this month. Congratulations to Madeline Boyce for becoming only the 26th pitcher in the history of New Jersey high school softball to record 1,000 strikeouts in a career. She did this in North's 1-0 win of Madison Square. Madeline finished the game with 18. varsity boys tennis won 4-1 over Central Regional on April 30th. Patrick Buck placed to secure the first win by winning his match at first singles 6-0-6-0. Next match she hit the win with Jason McGlorrie at third singles with a 6-2-6-0 score, and Daniel Cunningham and Thomas Sherlock clinched a win at first doubles with a 6-1-3-6-10-8 score, deciding the match. Mateo Corruro confirmed the 4-1 score at second singles with a 7-5-6-2 score. The boys tennis team won the first round of the short conference tournament against Jackson Memorial. Daniel Cunningham and Thomas Sherlock secured the first win with a 6-0-6-1 score at first doubles. At first singles, Patrick Bonapista brought in the second one with a 6-0-6-2 score and confirming the team win with second doubles pair Matt Conte and Wat Boyl- Watsley with a 6-2-2-6-13-11 score. Jason McGlorrie scored the 4-1 score with a score of 1-6-6-4-10-0. This past weekend, the team competed in Monmouth County Tournament where boys tennis players throughout the county competed to win their bracket. Patrick Buck, who was competing in the first singles bracket, came out of the tournament victorious by winning third place for first singles. Patrick won his first match 6-0-6-0 and surpassed both the four seed and the third seed in the bracket with scores of 6-3-6-3 and 6-1-6-1 consecutively. The freshmen and sophomore members of the North Golf Team had an impressive showing at the Lacy Line J. K. Classic Tournament, finishing in third overall. Freshman John Emmerich took home the individual tournament title with a score of 78, followed up by Alex Chancis with a score of 81, Rob Sutton with a score of 87, and Chuck Finkman with an 89. Senior Greg Boydan put an outstanding point on his outstanding golf season by shooting a score of 82 at the state sectional tournament. His was the best individual season by Middletown North golfer in recent history. The girls' golf team closed out their season in a quad match against S.J.D., Middletown South, and Freehold Borough. They beat all three teams with the lowest score of 195. Paige Payton led the line with the lowest score of 44. Evelyn Staran helped secure the victories with a 47, and Reese Jankowski earned a bargain. The track program performed well at the Monmouth County Relay Championships. The night was highlighted by three school records, plus the girls' team won third place overall. The three school records broken were girls' distance medalie 1252.54, first place, Isabel Courtney, Stanford, Mia Zawinski, and Helena Sheff. Girls' pole vault relay 17 feet, third place, Cameron Uncle and Olivia Panzino, and girls' discus 207 feet 2 inches, third place, Lydusly Groth group 99.1, and Ava Gonzalez through 97.3. The track program also had a great showing at the state sectional tournament over this weekend. The team had numerous medal winners moving on to the group stage championship in two weeks. Girls' 4x8 relay team second placed with Mia Zawinski, Evelyn Zawinski, Isabel Courtney, and Helena Sheff. Also, in the 100 hurdle, Chelsea Baxter placed fifth, pole vault Cameron Uncle fifth, 800 Helena Sheff sixth, long jump Francesca Di Nuzzo sixth, high jump Anna Froth sixth, javelin Sydney Lahaski sixth, chop up Brian Novak fourth, chop up Haley Rodolov sixth, triple jump Chelsea Baxter fifth, and for discus Lydusly Lydusly Cycler sixth. Middletown North is starting a unified kickball team for the 2025-2026 spring season. Unified sports brings together both neurotypical and neurodivergent students to participate in authentic athletic events. This year, we are kicking off a new team by challenging Middletown South to a unified kickball team on May 29th at 4:00 p.m. The Spring Band Concert is May 29th at 7:00 p.m., and the Spring Choral Concert is Wednesday, June 4th at 7:00 p.m. All are welcome. The National Honor Society induction ceremony will take place Monday, June 6th at 6:00 p.m. at the reindeer of June 17th. Thank you.
Thank you, please. Don't see Sophia Castellano here yet, so we'll head back to her if she comes. We're going to now go to our presentation with Dr. Young on HIV grades and SSDS period one comparison.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm May Young, District Director, Student Support Services. I'll be presenting on the student safety data system and the HIV grades for spring 2025. So SSDS, we are required to report out on twice a year. The spring presentation is on reporting period one, which is the period from September 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024. You can see listed here the incident types that we're required to report out on. And for comparison in the columns, you can see this same reporting period from last year compared to the reporting period for this year. Next are the HIV grades. So in the fall, each school's safety and climate team meets and assesses, does a self-assessment on the school's HIV grade according to a rubric provided by the state. Those self-assessment grades are then submitted to the state for verification, and they come back as our HIV grades for the spring. So you can see each respective school's grades listed here, and the district grade is listed at the bottom. It is important to note that the highest possible grade on the rubric is a score of 78. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. Now we're going to start with our committee reports, curriculum and instruction. Mr. Tull.
Yes, thank you. We met on last Thursday, the 14th. A few highlights for the report. First, I just want to thank Dr. Kerrigan, Dr. Cook, and Mr. Kushner, who gave us very detailed summaries of the various curricula that were up for revision going into next year, just so everyone understands. Whether it's because updated state standards come out, or a particular area hasn't been revised in five years or a five-year cycle, there's a sort of organized way to revisit and update curricula. So they, I was going to say briefed us, but it wasn't briefed. It was very detailed, very thorough on all the updates and changes in instruction and some of the resources and all those things for the various areas. So that was very much appreciated and very good discussion. Also, just an announcement, over the course of the next month or so, probably sometime in June, there'll be a launching of the Summer Learning Resources website on the district's website. That'll include information such as summer reading for all the different grade levels, AP Advanced Placement Advantage assignments, and other resources to promote, you know, not falling too far behind over the summer for anybody who's interested and able to take advantage of that. And then we continue to talk about the K-5 math pilot, math program pilots. The administration has evaluated a number of different program options and narrowed it down to the two that they've proposed to pilot in the district. So starting next year, there will be a pilot of two different programs. One called Amplify by Desmos, and the other is by the company that provides iReady, the iReady program in the district already. The Desmos program will be in one class of every grade level at Village and Runcroft, and the iReady program will be at every level, one class of every level at New Monmouth and Ocean Ave. And so that'll give the district a pretty uniform dataset to look at over the course of the next year. And by probably before this time next year, in the early part of next year, 2026, there'll be a recommendation of what program to adopt as the new math program. What we currently use is called Envision. That's still a contender, to the extent that it's still in all the other buildings. It'll be looked at and evaluated compared to the used to. But again, whatever the program is, the focus is on a return to the, you know, fundamentals of computation and math skills building and development and memorization, things like that. And kind of coming back from the overemphasis on discovery and exploration of concepts that we might be used to now. But I think that's good for the highlights. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Tull. Moving on to Student Services, Mrs. Wright.
Yes, thank you. So we also met on Thursday, May 14th. The committee did discuss one settlement agreement, which is on our agenda tonight for voting. We also celebrated that on Wednesday, May 14th, the same night, high school South varsity baseball team facilitated a game with the autism and envy programs. This was a really great event, obviously featuring outstanding collaboration, teamwork, and and demonstrated the benefits of inclusive educational opportunities. And as Ms. Peyton was noting before in her address, I reported on this last month as well, we are looking to have more unified sports opportunities for our schools, and we will be hosting a unified kickball game, although we have the date of May 28, not the 29th. So I don't know if the date changed. But when we met as a committee, the date was Wednesday, May 28 at 4:30 at High School South. So hopefully, we can see some folks out there. And this is something, obviously, for next year, we are looking to commit to actually having more unified games, because there are several county, school districts that have unified teams as well that we'll be able to play against. For the ESY summer program, there's planning that's going on to make sure that it's a highly effective program this summer. And the other thing to note was on this past Friday, May 16, Middletown Friends and Diverse Learners had their meeting with Mrs. Renger. I was able to be there. Dr. Alphone and Mr. Cullen were also able to join us. And the biggest discussion was the changes to the ESS program and what we're looking to do in district, which I know is part of Dr. Alphone's presentation tonight.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wright. All right, now we should open the microphone for public comment on agenda items only. If anybody wishes to make a comment piece, that person state your name and adjust the record.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jeff Warshower. I live at Mawath Ave in Navisink. So I believe on the agenda tonight is a reapproval of policies. So I've been reviewing your policies since all of these school closings have been going on on the board docs website. Who manages that, by the way? I'm just curious.
Board docs in general?
Yeah, so the...
It's a service that we pay...
Well, who's the administrator?
In district that hosts things? It would be my secretary, who was...
Okay. Because I see things changing all the time.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I get a little skittish. But anyway, so there's a lot of policies, I guess, that the board has to consider and will be reapproving tonight. I don't expect the Board of Education to be completely literate on all those policies. I think it's probably a heavy lift to have reviewed all of them ahead of reapproval. I don't know whether there are or what that would entail, but there are a few that I wanted to highlight, at least based on recent events, and that's specifically around school closing and the function of committees. So I think Eric Dowell's going to talk more on school closings. But worth noting, before he goes into greater detail on those, happy to just review a couple of the points on that, that one, the proposed closing is consistent with the district's approved LRFP, because, so, and these are policies also taken from New Jersey Administrative Code, so there's law that's kind of informing a lot of these policy. A, the district has demonstrated that sufficient school building capacity exists to have students for the five years following the closing. Or the school district has demonstrated through a feasibility study that the benefits of undertaking new construction outweigh those of rehabilitating the school proposed for closure. Just want to add added emphasis on the benefits. So I think there's been a lot of focus on expense rationalization and efficiencies. So the primary focus should be on benefits. And then, two, the use of temporary facilities in remaining schools does not result or increase from an overall facility shortage caused by the school closing. I think that was in question in prior plans. And three, the reassignment of students to other schools in the district does not produce sustain nor contribute to unlawful segregation, separation, or isolation of student populations on the basis of race or national origin. And that was inconclusive. So there's a lot that goes into doing a feasibility study. You have a policy around school closing, so I hope the Strategic Planning Committee and the board takes into account law, policy, and community input into all of that. So then, on committees, that was under board docs as well. I can't tell if it's a policy or bylaw, but I think I spoke to board independence before. So I just wanted to highlight a couple things to the board. Maybe you can take action ahead of reapproving these policies to make them stronger. Just by way of background, I'm the corporate governance officer for the New Jersey Division of Investments, so I oversee governance for an $80 million pension fund. So I work with a lot of the largest companies in the country around good companies. That being said, in terms of committees, just for everyone's benefit, I'll read it here, and I'll leave these for anyone that wants to review them after. In order to use the time, effort, and expertise of the members of the Middletown Township Board of Education effectively, the board shall operate under a committee system, and there are standing committees. The board may authorize the establishment of such standing committees from among its membership as it finds necessary to study operations in specific areas and to make recommendations for board action. The following rules will govern the appointment and function of such committees. A, the following committee shall be established through action of the board. And list out 10. Curriculum, finance, facilities, policy, legislative, student services, personnel, co-curricular technology, and negotiations. B, the committee chairperson and member shall be appointed by the board president to serve a one-year term. So I just wanted to focus real quick on that one in that. So to date, the board president has appointed all chairpersons of the various committees. So Mr. Capone appointed himself as the chair of the finance committee. Is that correct?
It's in the back and forth, I'm sorry.
Did you appoint yourself as chair of the finance committee?
No, I take everybody's input from what they want to be on with committee.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, you're up your five minutes, so I'm going to have to just wrap up.
Okay. So thank you, I understand. So I would recommend, since based on what you just said, changing appointed to nominated, because it seems like you were nominated, and then I would add an amendment to that where the president cannot serve as chairperson for any committee. So the president and the superintendent are already ex officio board members, so they are effectively across members of all committees. And for the benefit of independence, it's not appropriate for the president to be chairperson, to be on any committee, to be chairperson of any committee, especially the finance committee, because you're effectively the steward of 62% of all tax receipts for Middletown residents. And I don't think any Middletown resident would want to see that level of concentration of oversight of finances for one single person. So I would like the board to take into account my recommendations of changing from appointed to nomination for chair of various committees, and that the president cannot serve as chairperson for any committee. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a public comment on agenda items? Name and adjust the record.
Good evening, everybody. Eric Dowell, Navisink, near the Steel Bridge. Just one quick point on committees, and then a couple points on school closing. Having gone to a few of these meetings now, we can't help but notice that shared services does not report out a committee, and that's problematic. There don't seem to be any minutes that come out of shared services. That's problematic. Even if it's not the case, that suggests a sort of black box in shared services, which raises all sorts of problems. It's one of the most important committees. I hope everyone could agree with that. That black box effect, we would suggest, should cease immediately. Maybe the most obvious way to change it would be to add additional members from this board that could help add some transparency for one of the most important committees across the township, and we would encourage that to happen quickly. With respect to the school closing policy, which I believe is 7113.1, we would suggest that it be, you know, basically segregated out of the book of policies for additional work. In our view, it's deficient on a few fronts with respect to, you know, mentioned adequacy of school facilities. You should also consider their quality when you're evaluating whether to close any particular schools, not just whether they're adequate. Things that are not listed that should be considered are the impact on affected communities, economic pros and cons, impact on property valuations, and all of the other possible options, because as has been made clear in multiple meetings, a broad consensus seems to feel that closing schools should be the last possible option. And then with respect to the students, as Mr. Warshower went through, rightfully is reference to avoiding unlawful segregation, separation, isolation, but the policy should also evaluate whether any proposed school closure would negatively impact the educational experience or the social, emotional experience for any affected children. And again, so much focus on this particular policy, again, which is 7113.1, it might make sense to take that out of the book and spend another month working on it in more detailed fashion, and certainly, the community would be very willing to help with that exercise. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we, you want to speak about the shared services quick, or?
I'm not sure if that we want.
Maybe we've recorded out in the past, haven't we?
They don't meet every month.
Right, but we don't meet every month, that's why. So shared services is reported out when we do meet, but we do not meet sometimes for months.
Good evening, Scavman Kirsten, 32 Thompson Ave, and Leonardo. I just want to talk a little bit about transparency. That was kind of a big theme of the discussions that we've had over the last couple of months. And looking at the agenda that was posted, and in particular, the transfers that are occurring throughout the district, after some investigating, having to be the detective in order to do this and not being transparent and open about what's happening, it appears, from what I can tell through the transfers list, is that four schools, four elementary schools are going to be losing a full-time reading specialist and math specialist that would be sharing. So Leonardo and Navisink will be going from a full-time reading and math specialist to a half-time reading and math specialist shared between those two schools. Same with River Plaza and Fairview. It would be better if the administration was transparent about these things that are happening. Again, instead of having the parents or community members have to go in and investigate and dig through this information that I don't even know is accurate, I think it's pretty accurate from what I can tell and from what some discussions that I've been having. So, and then another, you know, question, and I think there should be discussion on this, discussion as to why this is happening, and if it makes sense, it makes sense, you know? But my point, though, is not whether it's right or wrong, or whether I think it's right or wrong. It's just to be transparent and open in communication with all of us, so we know what's actually happening in the schools. We really, really need that. In order to have a better relationship with the parents and with the residents of Middletown, we need to be transparent. So specifically with Leonardo, you know, I don't know if it's a full Title I school, it's a partial Title I school, I don't quite understand how that works, or if under Title I, they provide funds for a reading specialist and math specialist, and if that's what happened in the past, now that's not happening anymore. So again, transparency, open communication, just letting us know what's happening, instead of just posting it on the agenda on Friday afternoon, which I'm not sure it was posted on Friday afternoon, it might not have been until Monday morning, I'm not sure, I didn't look until Monday morning, although someone said, hey, it's not posted yet, but just be open and honest with us. Let us know what's happening within the district so that we can prepare our children for the outcomes that are being talked about and discussed at the administrative level and then presented to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ashley Stud, Navisink President, Builder Ave. I was looking through the build list, and I saw we paid the police officers an additional $1,000 for board of ed meetings, requesting that we once again revisit with the Mayor Tony Perry based on our current financial issues, sharing the cost of the police officers in the building.
Anybody else wish to make a public comment?
Emily Onahue, Ford Ground Ave, Navisink. Mr. Capone, I just want to address the fact that you keep on telling us it's not a back and forth when we have public comments. It does seem, though, that in the rules, it doesn't state that. It does state that only if it requires investigation, that you guys won't answer our questions. So again, in the spirit of transparency and just collaboration, we do ask that unless it really does require investigation, that you guys do have conversations with us back and forth, we're here to help when we have questions. So just hoping moving forward, you guys will answer our questions before you guys vote on things, because I only think that's fair. Thank you.
So let me just add on to what I think Mr. Warshower, I believe his name was, what he asked before. The policies he's reading, we hear long before I was present on the board, I think probably everybody on this board. So we're just implementing what we have as a policy. We appreciate the input, maybe it's something we have to revisit and look at, but these are not policies that we created, they're policies that were there already in existence.
Right, so we do ask that you guys just revisit them. This is just from the agenda? So the agenda states...
I just want to be clear that these are nothing that we created. These are stuff that we're just abiding by because it'll pass on from board to board to board, and maybe it's something we have to revisit and we'll look at that.
Thank you.
Hi, Kristen Rooney, 105 Ave, Navisink. Just to piggyback off of that, I know that these are policies that have been in effect for years, but we know that as a board that you do have the power to change policies. So that's, I think, what we're talking about. So we know that you've changed policies in the past related to other things. So I would hope that if there's something that we come upon, that is a policy that's existed for many years, that is no longer adequate, because times change and the world changes, that you as a board would take the responsibility to reexamine that policy and change it where that's necessary. And that would be your responsibility to the students of our district, which is...
I think it's important to know that we don't create these policies, they're created through, actually, we use New Jersey school boards, so they're model policies, and there are people that actually write these policies based on alignment to the law and the current school climate. So we receive them, certainly we do have, the board does have the ability to make changes and tweaks, but they are updated to the current standard of what educational law is. We pay for that service. So we don't originate them, they're originated from a service, obviously, one of the larger overarching governing bodies in New Jersey, which is New Jersey School Boards, and we just switched from Stroud SSM last year into school boards, and they have a little bit different of a templateing system, and certainly, they try to encumber as much of the language that we organically added through the policy committee of the board over time. But I just wanted everyone to just kind of be aware that they create those policies with law in mind, and they're categorized as either being mandatory or otherwise. Some of them are mandatory by law, some of them are mandatory by just what processes you need to occur in a school, and then there are other ones that are more optional in nature.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it's also important to note that we all know that you have changed policies in the past and caused some pretty drastic ramifications that we're still paying for. So to say that you can't change them is not 100% true.
I want to tell you can't...
No, well, I mean, to say they were handed down and handed down and handed down, and this is what was here, and we can't change it, that's not 100% true. So that's what I'm getting at. If there's a policy that doesn't work for our town, we've examined other policies in the past that we didn't like, and we changed them. the past that we didn't like, and we changed them. So if there's something that we all agree doesn't work for our town, then that is the responsibility of this board to examine. And not to say that we've just been handed this, because that's 100% not true. Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else wish to make another comment?
Hi, Erica Lee Casey. I have two kids at Thompson. And I wanted to talk today about the district's recent decision to cut the Tier Three Effective School Solutions Program for our most at-risk students with social and emotional needs from the middle schools. Without the ESS program, the demands on some teachers and staff who are already stretched thin will increase significantly. Teachers are not trained nor have the bandwidth to handle the complex social and emotional needs of these at-risk kids. To try and illustrate, in the fifth grade before ESS, I had four formal IEP meetings, 29 email correspondences with just the classroom teachers, and 93 more between myself and the SBSS, who was serving as my daughter's counselor. All of these were around social, emotional, and behavior issues, not academic ones. This year, under ESS, we had one IEP meeting, the shortest and most productive we've ever had, one to two emails to each teacher just to check in, and two emails to the guidance counselor to discuss minor scheduling issues. This speaks volumes. Fewer crisis meetings, fewer emails, less scrambling to manage behaviors without the right tool. Teachers, counselors, and case managers weren't being pulled in a hundred directions. ESS gave them a team to rely on, and that freed them up to focus on what they're actually there to do, teach guidance, support all students. There was rarely a call or a meeting with our ESS counselor, Monica, where she wasn't being summoned to go to guidance, the office, or the classroom to support students and staff. It was clear that Monica was essential to Thompson's school climate and functioning. Now, I know you will want to say you're hiring an in-house clinician for Thompson and Thorne that will mimic the current program as much as possible. But ESS comes with a proven model of success. Monica has a clinical supervisor she reports to and consults with. Who will the district's clinician report to and who will be their resource? Monica collected structured weekly data via teacher feedback and her own observations. Will this district hired clinician be collecting this teacher feedback in the same structured format like Monica did? Will they formally track outcomes as is required in the program? And will the data drive treatment plan? Will they follow an evidence-based mental health curriculum like Monica did in group sessions? As parents, we had a built-in weekly call with Monica. This is all part of the ESS program, not specific to her. She would update us, we would update her on how things were going at school. Monica was our contact point for any concerns regarding our daughter that arose. Transparency creates trust, fosters collaboration, and improves outcomes. When parents feel informed, they do not need to ask for leave. Will this clinician be as transparent when their paycheck is coming directly from the district it works for? I'm concerned hiring in-house poses a conflict of interest. How will this new in-district clinician adhere to HIPAA laws and FERPA standards? How is the district planning on finding a clinician with the same level of specialized experience? I looked up the requirements for being a school-based mental health clinician with ESS. The applicant needs at least two years of experience treating children or adolescents with significant behavioral and emotional challenges, along with their clinical license in social work, counseling, or marriage and family therapy. Dr. Alphone, you had mentioned in a previous email that there were in-district current staff that may be interested in the position. Do they check all the boxes that ESS requires to be hired? The district has had trouble filling open roles for case managers and paraprofessionals for the past five years. What happens if this counseling position goes unfilled? Or if the clinician leaves, gets sick, or needs extended leave? Who will then fill in for the kids relying on them? With ESS, those gaps were covered. They carry the costly, ESS carried the costly and time-consuming burden of hiring, vetting, and staffing the clinicians in our schools. It was taken care of. They also carry the burden of liability and maintain their own insurance and supervision structures. Will the district now be forced to carry that liability without the same resources to manage it? It sounds costly. This is a short-term budget move with long-term consequences educationally, financially, and legally. There will be an increase in out-of-district placements, conduct violations, loss of instructional time, litigation, and a definite increased burden on school staff. The Collier School in Marlboro that serves as an out-of-district placement option for at-risk students like the ones in the program costs about $77,000 per year for one student. Cornerstone in Cranford, another therapeutic school and out-of-district placement, school is upwards of $90,000 per year. Take a few of these placements, along with the transportation costs we are required to pay, and you've lost your cost savings, and our middle schools will have no ESS program to show for that cost. Our at-risk kids are bright, brave, hardworking, loved, and incredibly, and have incredible potential. Dr. Alphone, in your emails to families within the middle school ESS program, you stated, quote, "We begin to brainstorm ways to continue to provide, even though not obligated to do so, the critical clinical support that many of our students need to thrive in the school setting." I have two things to say to that. Number one, I believe schools provide the Tier Three ESS program because it saves money in the long run and keeps students in district. Number two, our kids aren't thriving in middle school, they are just trying to survive. Kids with severe social, emotional disabilities are working twice as hard to get through the day. Every moment takes effort, sitting still, following directions, regulating emotions, keeping up academically, and all of it while facing often social rejection and isolation from their peers. It may sound like a reach, but it is not when I say their safety is at risk with this move. It wouldn't just be a step back. It feels like pulling the rug out from under our most vulnerable students. This is not the age group nor the population to cut the board from. Thank you for letting me go past three minutes.
Hi, Bjork Sakey, Ashard Drive, Middletown. On the personnel side, I wanted to start off by recognizing the retirement of Mary Pat Harrington. She might be our best teacher in district. She will be irreplaceable. I've had the honor of having her volunteer at an Understanding Challenges Program with me when my kids were in elementary school, and she captivated the second graders. And she's just spectacular, you and me. So I wanted to make sure she didn't head off into the sunset without recognizing her. Then the other, I just wanted to make a comment. And I already wrote to the administrators about the transfer of Coach Brittany White from South to Thompson. And I, I won't reread what I wrote, but I just felt it was important that people understood. Although she wasn't my daughter's teacher, but she was very important to her. And Hannah even wrote about her in her National Honor Society essay. And for those of you that don't know, Hannah has Down Syndrome, so she has an intellectual disability. And she talked about her cheer journey and being cut from the cheer team in ninth grade, and how sad she was, even crying. And to try to keep her spirits high, my mom reached out to the gymnastics coach, who kindly offered, even though she had a manager, kindly offered me a position assisting the girls' team. This opportunity turned out to be wonderful. I had a good time supporting the girls by incorporating cheer moves, you know Hannah's all about cheer, into the pre-competition cheers, helping to keep score during meets, and making the coach dance to silly songs. Best of all, I was able to form new friendships. She kind of goes on and talks about how she worked hard to make the cheer team the next year. And she adds, "Even though cheerleading coincides with gymnastics, I make it a priority, I try to attend, to attend competitions and celebrate with the gymnast, gymnasts at their year-end banquet. I'm grateful to have met Coach White, as the gymnastics team has played an important role in my journey." So I just wanted to point out a teacher that has gone the extra mile. Again, she never taught my daughter, but she is probably the only teacher in the building that will have full conversations with her. Hannah's communication impaired, so she doesn't like to use her voice a lot. So I don't know everything that goes into the decision, but I think she will be sorting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment?
I can come right up again.
You really can't, but.
You can, just on the same topic.
Okay, so gender item?
Just real quickly again on policies, because I draft policies as well. And then for committees. I understand that they're not amended regularly, but these are extenuating circumstances. And I know everyone appreciates that. And lastly, I mentioned before on, from other like committee charters, where the public understands the duties of the committee as well as the committee's part of their policy that says, "The committee shall be provided with a list of its functions and duties." I was just hoping that those functions and duties of each committee could also be made public for everyone.
So all of this is public and it's actually four members of the board on each committee?
Right.
And any other chair of each committee? That's the way it's been for as long as I've been here? And prior to that as well?
The functions and duties are public?
Functions and duties?
That's what I'm specifically.
I believe there might be a little bit of a note of what they entail. I don't know how detailed those are.
Whenever the committees need, committee members need to understand their functions and duties, it would be helpful if the public understood those as well, so we can hold board of bed members and committee members accountable for what those functions and duties are.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to make a comment? Seeing no one else making public comment, I wish to close the public session and move on with our agenda. We're now going to go to Dr. Alphone's superintendent report.
Great, thank you. Just first, a reminder about our upcoming strategic planning sessions. Our steering committee is meeting on May 27 at 6:00 p.m. at the High School South, in the High School South cafeteria. The first community at-large session led by New Jersey School Boards will be on May 29 at 6:00 p.m. at the High School North cafeteria. Our second steering committee meeting will be on June 12 at 6:00 p.m. here in the High School North Media Center. And the second New Jersey School Board Full Community Session will be on June 16 at 6:00 p.m. at the, in the High School North cafeteria again. I do want to talk a little bit about ESS. I know there have been some concerns. We did send an extensive communication home to those impacted families yesterday. And the first thing in my letter that I said is, I appreciated everybody's patience because, as everyone knows, we've been trying to rectify the budget. Certainly, with the financial situation in the state that it was in, we had no ability to make a full commitment to anything until that dust settled. And then our second priority was obviously staffing the district for next year, because we do need to get that done. It is time-sensitive. We have a deadline. With those two things in our rearview, fortunately, we can move on to things such as the ESS contract and certainly the hybrid model that we're going to be moving forward with for next year. This, you know, certainly when we have challenging budget times, we have to look at, you know, the costs of things such as this. And certainly, you know, when things are not mandatory within a district, and I'm not saying not important, crucially important, I'm just saying not mandatory by law or statute or, you know, a requirement of us, you know, we have to begin to look at those things. We also have to look at the fact that, the history of this contract. Our contract began back in 2016 as a small seed program at our high schools. It was predominantly put in for our Bridges and Visions program at High School North and expanded to High School South. Then came the pandemic. The pandemic came, there was a lot of federal money that also came with that, and a lot of it was budgeted towards mental health. Certainly, there was a greater need. Unfortunately, that money has expired. It was termed, it was a finite amount. It was, it was a one-time infusion of money in a variety of different grants, which had great restrictions on how you could use it. And we were extremely fortunate, as were many other districts, in being able to dedicate a significant amount of money towards, you know, clinical mental health support in school. And it's a real fine line between our role as educators and what happens in the private therapeutic world. But this gave us a mechanism to be able to bring more of that internally into the district. Prior to last year, that contract had grown to $1.6 million, which is a significant amount of money for the number of students we were servicing. We were servicing 74 students at the time, which is, you know, not real cost-effective, as important as it is. So last year, we made a half a million dollar cut in some of the periphery things that we knew wouldn't impact the quality of service in the building with our kids. And that brought it down to 1.1 million, which was still significant for the 70 or so kids that were receiving services in the program. So we started to say, all right, well, this is obviously a very large ticket item and a very big contract, and it's also extremely important. We all hold that belief administratively, and I know the board does as well. So we started to think of, how can we do this in a more cost-effective way while still getting a very similar level of service to our students? And I know there's change and, and, you know, there's going to be different clinicians potentially in district. But I, I know that my team and I are confident that we're still being able to uphold a certain degree of service that we really feel is important. We met with ESS today. They are still partners with us. They will be working in our two high schools, and they will provide the clinicians. They will also be providing a clinician for all of our fit-to returns. We really felt that was extremely important. They will service all 16 buildings in that capacity so that students can get someone to crisis screen them that's neutral and outside of the purview of, you know, the domain of, you know, school, everyday school functioning. And also the turnaround time. We want kids to get help and assistance immediately. And also, if they are seen to be in a place where they can return, we want them to be able to return as soon as possible. And when you start to create an à la carte menu of places to send students for fit-to returns, you lose those things. You lose the immediacy, which is why we chose to maintain the fit-to returns, because we do a heavy volume of them, given that we have over 8,500 students in the district. And ESS has done a great job of that for us. You know, our middle schools obviously were our most challenging in the sense that we needed to find a more cost-effective way to get clinical support. So we have some really smart people on my administrative team. Dr. Young has a clinical background herself, so does Mrs. Granger, and they put together an amazing job description where we do believe we will be able to find someone who has that extensive clinical background. And, you know, I did make mention that there are people within our district that do not work under their clinical license, but work in the private world as well, under their clinical licensure, that may want to enter into this field and just be a clinician for us. They will not be doing double duty, they will not be functioning members of the child study team doing case management or assessments. They will be clinicians, and they will mimic the work that ESS has upheld for us at the middle school level. Same thing with our elementary. In the past, we have had a clinician working directly with some of our students who are experiencing behavioral and social emotional challenges. However, we have decided to pivot on that a little bit, not because we don't want to put a counselor there, but because many, the majority of our elementary students who are exhibiting difficulties are exhibiting high levels of behavior. And because ESS is based on a play/talk therapy model, students have to be ready to receive that. So we need to put other resources at our youngest kids to try to give them and develop skills and coping mechanisms to de-escalate behaviors before they can be available for that clinical support to work. So like I said, this was very important to us, to try and minimize the expense, because we knew we had to, but also not, not allow this to go away in some capacity. Actually, this hybrid model will allow us to service more kids. And just so everyone is aware, ESS limits our case, their case management load because they require the supervision aspect, because of the way their licensure works. ESS explained to us today, and Dr. Young was explaining to us, that the people that we will employ do have full clinical certs. do have full clinical certs and they will be able to take on a bigger caseload. And, and that's not a sacrifice to the level of service. A lot of the ESS clinicians' time is spent engaging with the supervisor. The people that we hire will not have to have that because their clinical certification is at a certain level. Certainly, we're going to look for all the features that ESS is employing their clinicians with as well. And we are going to maintain the same intake model that ESS already has. We met with them today and we are going to be in lockstep. And it's going to be two programs, two, two different sets of providers that are doing exactly the same thing. We will also be able to expand this program to students that do not have IEPs, which is crucially important because it's not just students that are classified as special education that need mental health and social emotional support. Quite frankly, we get many outside of that that we cannot pair with ESS and the old model because it was, it was preventative. So we are happy that we were able to find a way forward in a really, really challenging situation. You know, and certainly it's changed. I get it, it's difficult. But, you know, we're going to continue to evaluate it as we move forward. And we're not opposed to certainly feedback and, and evolving things for, in the best interest of our students. But we also have to pay attention to the cost effectiveness of what we're putting forward. So I'll move on to other things. The Champions Program, which is our new before and after care program, will be providing information to families in the very near future regarding registration and open house opportunities. We are meeting with them tomorrow to go over the details of the rollout plan. The first thing that will launch will be a website where parents can register and we'll send out communications to that effect. And then they've already started their work behind the scenes with engaging with our building leadership, getting licensure for each of the buildings, and then also getting supplies and materials organized for each of the 11 elementary sites that we'll be running. Just a reminder, this Friday, the district is closed. That was a weather related day that we didn't have to utilize this year. So happy four day weekend. School will be back in session on Tuesday, May 27th. I'll be at a soccer tournament, so fun for all, right? On June 12th, it's on the agenda tonight, just for everyone's information, an amendment to our school calendar. It is not for anyone but the high school because of the exam schedule. We need one more built-in half day because of the way the days fall. So June 12th for our high school students only will be an early release day to accommodate the exam schedule. We just have to make an adjustment to the school calendar. But that does not apply to middle and elementary school. And our vocational and special class programs will be in for the full day as per normal on, you know, those early dismissal days that are unique to the high school. The final update I have is for the bees at Bayview Elementary School. So I've talked to the principal today and tells all this time, the bee issue has been ever present, probably for the better part of her time there, which I think is 14 years. So the bees are back. We've had the exterminator out twice now. And apparently, it's because the ground is extremely dry. They like dry ground. They've created homes. There's not been a lot of water, collectively speaking. So they're quite comfy. So we brought the exterminator back in again to try and treat it a second time. We are also limited in how we can treat it because we have kids on the, like it's a school building. But we are doing the best we can and we are paying attention to it. You know, I know that the township is working on some irrigation in the field for the long term, obviously for the upgrade and upkeep of the fields. But it will also help with the bee issue because they do not like wet ground. We do have some sprinklers that they're going to be running out in the back of Bayview to try to help the problem in addition to what the exterminators are doing. If the field work on the irrigation with the township doesn't get started before the end of the summer, we may actually even till it to try to ruin their homes, to disrupt their lodging, so to speak. But, you know, all that, we'll have to see where we stand with the work the town is doing. But we are paying attention to it. Bayshore was also treated this week because I know there is a similar situation over there, but it is due to dry ground. And many of the bees that are apparently under the ground and coming out are not the ones that are stinging. There's also coinciding wasps that like to get into the mix. And, and they tend to be the, the stingers, so to speak. So we are on it. And I just wanted to update the community on where it stands at the current time.
Thank you, Dr. Alphons. Any approval of the meeting minutes 9A and B? Motion to approve?
Still move?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Need a motion to approve 10A through BD.
Still move?
Second. Discussion?
10A through what?
BD.
BD, there's a lot of them. You ran for whatever seat now.
There's like that kind of, uh, done.
And city of policies.
Is John Shaw the joint coordinator?
Yeah.
Let's. All right, just a case.
All in favor?
Can I talk about the minute?
I understand.
Some of these titles. Are we hiring new people?
No, no, these are mandated. You have to name people already in district to hold these titles. Like somebody has to be the HFE coordinator. Somebody has to be affirmative action. There are people that we employ.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I also want to bring up being that people are discussing the policies. Can we make a commitment to maybe look at these and discuss them? Because you're right, some of these policies have been here even before I've been on the board. And I think that we could probably update some of these. So maybe, I would even like to see, maybe we could do it as a board as a whole so that we all can have input on.
I would suggest that everybody needs to do their homework on reading all the policies and they're all posted online because if, there's an extraordinary amount, so.
Hundreds of that.
We could do it. We don't have to do every one at the same time. We could take a few and really dig in. I mean, we're listening to concern. Maybe they're concerned of board members sitting here. And grab a few, look at it if we need to change it. And then, we shouldn't be doing it anyway every year. They should be evaluated by the policy committee. And, you know, tweaks made. But I think, being that it has been brought up again, maybe we should do that.
I think Dr. Alphon's point is good. Come up with a few policies.
Yeah, we'll throw in their opposing.
Yeah, and we got a few. We have some just happened tonight.
And just bring them to the policy chair and then we can get plenty organized.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't hurt to do that. And like I said, some of these are so old that it might not even exist. And, and I think it's, also think it's a good idea for the committees to have.
Have to get them mandated also, so we can.
Yeah, I also think it's a good idea for the committees to have a guideline of what it is that each committee is supposed to.
Well, we can have somebody who gets to put that on our website to see what it is.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, I just think it's, it's a good time for discussion on it.
And so.
So we could vote in the ones we have now because policies can be changed at any, then at any.
Time, it's good.
So we start here and.
But we need a set of policies for the district. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Need a motion to approve business office consent to gender 11A through N. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to be opposed on legal belts.
Thank you.
Which one did you say, Joe?
Legal belts.
Anyone else? Okay, need a motion to approve 12A through R.
Inspector Tom, can we do a roll call on 12A just so we have?
Sure.
Okay.
So let's do a roll call first on 12A. Amy Roche?
I have a motion, a second.
Yep, motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Roll calling.
Mrs. Caminiti?
She's abstaining.
This is for the HIP.
She's abstaining on the hips. Exactly.
Abstaining?
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'm a yes on all except for 291905.
Mrs. Menewes?
I am a yes on all the unfounded and a no on the founded.
Mrs. Skolansky?
Yes.
Mr. Soparowski?
I'm a yes on all of them except for and 291159, 291905, and 292186 is now.
Mr. Tom?
I am a no on 290034, 291159, 291905, and a yes on the rest.
What was the, the last one, 29?
291905.
Mrs. Wright?
I'm a yes on all.
Mr. Capone?
No on the founded. Okay, need a motion to approve 12B through R.
So.
Discussion?
Yes, I would like to, um, have to vote on this. Thanking Mrs. Harrington for everything she's done for this district. I've known her for many, many years. She's touched so many children's lives in a positive way. And she definitely is going to be a hard choose to fill. I wish her the best in her retirement.
I echo that. She's been excellent for my family. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining on number 11.
What, number 11, Jill, or?
Oh, 11 on the personnel report.
11 on the personnel report.
Okay. So R11, you're abstaining?
R11, yeah.
Good, Amy?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now first I'm going to go to Megan and Ryan. Do you have anything you'd like to add or say? Go ahead first.
I just wanted to say that we're really excited. South is hosting the second year of the Fleet Week Naval Ceremony, where they come with their helicopters and they talk about the process of, and the benefits of being in the Navy. So hopefully, all goes well.
Nice weather, right?
The weather holds up. But we're really excited about that.
What day is it?
Thursday, it's Thursday, yeah.
11.
Oh, I don't know like what age that I got here after her, but regarding AP exams that just concluded last week, I just want to say good job to all the students that took those and sat through those stressful exams. Like I know how they can be, so I just want to say good job. And then one more thing. I believe, I'm pretty sure that this is Megan and I's last, last meeting. So I just wanted to, on behalf of both of us, express a sincere gratitude.
We want to say thank you.
What are you doing this summer?
Sorry.
It's an experience.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
We're sorry, we have to leave.
All right, we're going to move to old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss?
Yes, I do. I'd like to know where we are with the RFP process that we came up with last month. And if we're going to pick dates, can we do it while we're all here so we can get this moving?
So we did issue three RFPs. They were all due back today at 12:00. I do have several responses for each. I finished putting them in Google folders. I can share them with the board. And it's, you know, up to the board and how you want to proceed. I know we will review them as the administrative team and the board will, you know, review them as well.
Yeah, usually we get to pick our top three each board member and then tally up to see what we get some interviews.
So if I pay any sentences to all your board and everybody, if you can send back the three top and just to get them.
Yeah, and, and then we'd have to pick the dates to do this, so.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to give me dates tonight or you want to get back to me on that.
Everybody's on the spot right now, but if you want to do it now, do you want to come back to me by tomorrow? And just give me.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see it on the next agenda.
We have one board member not here today.
Yeah, it's like to see it on the next agenda. So whatever dates in between that, that's.
Yeah, we definitely have to get it done though.
Yeah, definitely.
We do, and I guess our next meeting is June 24th. So we have.
We definitely.
Perfect.
May I ask, are we going to look to do these at night or during the day?
We're going to have to do them at night.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. That's what I want to do. Thank you.[1491.44] Thank you, the day job.
If that is the old business?
And I want to be here for it.
Old business, anyone else? New business, anyone for new business?
Yes, I have one piece of new business. So I was approached by a member of the Sata Fairview Cemetery crematorium group to ask if the board would consider writing a letter opposing the plans to put the crematorium at Fairview Cemetery, considering the fact that it is in such close proximity to not only the neighborhood, obviously, it's right across the street where a lot of our students and families reside. It's right down the street from Forest Park, which is a favorite, you know, site of school trips for our elementary schools. It's very close to Fairview Elementary, Nut Swamp, Thompson. Honestly, depending on the way the wind blows, it could be Middlestown Village, right? And so all the pollutants that can be put in the air could pose a real risk to, you know, not only our students throughout the district, but also their families. And so I drafted a letter. I shared it with my fellow board members to see if there was consensus to do this. And I believe that there was some good positive feedback that we wanted to do this, but I just wanted to raise it formally tonight on the new business.
I will be signing that for you.
Me too.
I will as well, sit here.
And I did hear from Ms. Tobacco, she's not be able to hear tonight, but she also wants to sign as well. Okay, thank you so much.
Anyone else on new business? Okay, anyone on new business? Now, wish to open the microphone for public comment on non-agenda items. Have anything to say, please step to the mic, send your name and address for the remarks.
Again, Scottwood, 32 Thompson Avenue. Thank you to the students for being here and having attended those board meetings over the last couple of months. I felt for you guys up on the stage, as I did for board members as well. But, you know, showed grit and determination by staying up there and, and staying well past 10 o'clock one of the nights. And, you know, it doesn't go unnoticed by, by the public. We appreciate you and wish you all the best moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, one of the things that's come to my attention throughout this process is, you know, this topic of transparency. And a lot of us don't understand how this works. Now, my understanding is that we have an administration, we have Dr. Alphon, her administrative team, and they come up with ideas for the district and, and, you know, board business. And then they present those ideas to the board, who then have discussion about it and then eventually vote on the, the issues. That's my understanding of how it works. I think that's how it works. I think it would be good, and it would be helpful to everyone up here on the stage, if that was communicated to the public so that everybody had an understanding of how this process actually works. And maybe people will get more involved, such as, you know, some of us parents have, you know, based on this issue of school closings. You know, so it was just a, you know, suggestion that came to my mind. I, I love that we're having these strategic planning meetings and that we're being open and transparent. And we just want to keep that train going down the track, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, I just have a question. When you. Kristin Rooney, sorry. When you vote on the hip stuff, and maybe this is something that you can explain to me online. I don't, I don't understand exactly what you're saying yes and no to because I know that there's investigations that happen. So, yeah, what, what is happening there?
So they're voting on the outcome of each investigation, whether it's founded, meaning it was found to be hip under the law, or unfounded, meaning it was not determined to be hip under the law. So they're voting to affirm the outcome of the investigation, either as founded or unfounded.
But the investigation ends and says this is founded or unfounded.
Correct, correct.
And then it's presented.
And the board has to affirm that.
Is that?
That's part of law.
That's part of law.
Part of law.
I could, I could explain if she wants to, I vote no.
Go ahead, yes.
I, I vote no because we're not a part of those investigations. I, I just don't see how we could sit here and say yes to some and no to others. We're not a part of it. Truthfully, I believe this board shouldn't even have to vote on them. If that's an administrative function, that should be an administrative function. You know, but yes, sometimes people vote yes on some and no on others. I don't understand how, you know, for myself, I don't understand how I could do that. I would just rather not be a part of that.
And I can add on to, these are files that go to the state.
Yeah.
So for us, first, second, or third grade doing something wrong, obviously, the discipline that does take place, but that file then goes to the state. And I don't know where that goes there on the line.
Yeah, that's interesting. Okay, thank you.
And kids grow up, so they're kids.
I share what you're saying, and I, that's why I was wondering all the time, like, especially since you have trained people doing investigations, right? So that bring it forth to vote yes or no to what somebody already did who trained to do it? It seems crazy, but that's what the law is, so I'll even send it to the board. Thank you.
And I'll just, I'll just add something to clarify it, something I think gets lost in translation a lot, especially to the public or people who are just learning about it. When we vote on something being quote founded or unfounded, it's just a very narrow answer to the question of whether it meets what founded or unfounded is defined as in the statute, the HIV statute. It is not a determination that the conduct was... But I'm just saying, for example, if there's one that's unfounded, it is not a determination that the conduct was acceptable, that it was appropriate, that it wasn't a violation of school rules and conventional standards and all those things. And the students are often disciplined, as you'd imagine and expect, if, if it actually happened, obviously.
Yeah.
And I think we all have our critiques of the law and how it's written and what it imposes on us and the administrators and all that. But that determination of founded and unfounded, I think, it often gets lost in translation and it leads to issues because people, rightfully so, might get a letter home saying, what you reported happened to your kid was unfounded? That's not it. And I think we've actually corrected and updated those letters over the last couple of years to, to make that more clear.
Right, and I think a lot of people just sometimes don't. I understand what a hip is, so.
Sure.
But I think if people don't understand that, then that's probably.
Hip is a categorization mechanism. It's a reporting mechanism.
Yeah, right. Thank you, appreciate the information.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to make a public comment? Seeing no further comments, wish to close the public comment and adjourn the meeting. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Have a great night, everyone.